Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's always a pleasure to see everyone. It's always a pleasure to have an opportunity to be part of another day of the great event. Thank you all so much for coming out. At this time, I encourage you to order and I would like to call Justin Stevie Pace to stand with me. Stand and he will leave us with the invitation and I will leave us with the plea. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Councilor, Attorney General. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Hallelujah, Paul is beautiful down there. And when the sun shines, the portends of the righteousness of the covenant. The rings that will intermeagle. Lord bless us that we manage your city today. The opportunity to serve you and serve our fellow man and our city. Thank you for these who put the time and their effort forward to volunteer their service. Thank you for these professional employees who spent lives in developing skills that it's a... We might be a better servant if we guide them, protect them, give them wisdom and circumstances and joy and moral routines that every day might be a blessing to them as they say it's a servant be a blessing to us. Give us one heart, one voice and one spirit this day. If we might be a happy business one community and blessed that we can possibly be. Pray that not in empty words but in sincere hope of the spirit that we can see may be joy and envy of all that hear us and may we serve one another in that spirit. In Jesus' name we pray. I'll answer with my best.
In all faiths.
Last piece. Tension. Salute. Ladies. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the brotherhood for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be so very generous in that prayer. Thank you, Councilor. Captain Mealy, please. Proceeding on, Council at this time, we have a presentation, one of the highlights that's been put in place that we are saying thankless of people who give of themselves, which is the greatest model of Paul. So it is time to like call my agent, Director Chesney, as well as our City Manager, Mr. Wallace. Senator.
Thank you very much, my dear. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Glad to be here this morning and we are glad to be here and be able to appreciate our thanks to our employees with their hard work and dedication that they put in each and every day to serve in our community. These are the services and emergencies and five-year increments that we have for the month of June. With our police department, we have Sergeant John Young with 10 years of service. You're more than welcome if you'd like to.
A free... Manly few words, but Mr. Young, we appreciate what you do each and every day and we always encourage our people to go the extra mile, which we mean to get to the point at least of 29 years because of the retirement stake that I'm on my hands. But you're down here now, so thank you so much for what you do. We certainly appreciate you collectively as a council. Thank you so much.
Also, 10 years with our engineering department, we have Mr. Jimmy Cook.
Words about...
If you say a few words, we'll help.
And a word for Mr. Cook? Mr. Cook? You have a word, sir? Hey, what are you saying there? Those are words. Thank you. Thank you so much for what you've done and you're down here now, so we appreciate it.
With our first year creation department, we have Mr. Jocelyn Thomas with 5 years of service.
Thank you, Jocelyn. You have a word, please?
Yes, I just want to say thank you for being able to actually work with the youth and give back to the community that actually will be so thankful to be here.
Hey, listen. We do want you to hopefully, you know, be stay at least 24 years because retirement is ready. And you still be a young person. Thank you so much.
We have two others that were not able to be here with our bullet works department. Jonathan Green has had his 5 years and then our office manager with engineering coworkers with Captain Joe Davis with the community. So we'll make sure we get our thanks and appreciation for that as well.
Thank you so much. And thank you all for what you do and like I said, the opinion and favor that you all stay the course. Appreciate you all giving up and staying. Thank you so much. Proceeding on, Council at this time. I'm the City Clerk. I'd like to ask, Council, will the motion for the approval of the regular scheduled meeting minutes for the May 19 work session as well as the May 20 council meetings since we were all here, I'd ask if this is one motion. They have a motion, please.
Oh, what is it? It's down there. Say it.
Now, motion, Councilman Day, or second, the Council's going to agree. All right. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor of...
Yes. Thank you. Next, Council, I'm the City Council. I'd like to ask, are there any other things business that any Councilmember would like to discuss? Okay, we're getting to the resolutions and administration. We have resolution number 2025 dash 96 to be ratified in reference to authorizing and directing the mayor and city manager to enter into an agreement with Woodfield Contractors to perform emergency work on a portion of the old clay sanitary sewer line that runs along Sixth Street South, Sixth Street, excuse me, in an amount not to exceed $18,172.44. This is...
Whereas, it has been determined that emergency work is needed to replace a portion of the old clay sanitary sewer line that runs along Sixth Street. And whereas, Woodfield Contractors have provided a proposal to perform the emergency work for the replacement of 68 linear feet of sanitary sewer line in an amount not to exceed $18,172.44. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize the mayor and city manager to enter into an agreement with Woodfield Contractors to perform work on a portion of the old clay sanitary sewer line that runs along Sixth Street in an amount not to exceed $18,172.44. Pass approval adopted this 29th day of May, 2025, ratified this 3rd day of June, 2025.
Okay. Council, we've heard the resolution and at this time I'd like to ask for a motion to ratify, please. They have a motion to ratify.
Motion to ratify.
All right, we have the motion by Councilman Day. They have a second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Day. Comments or discussion? Okay. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor of...
Yes. Also, Council on Administration. We have resolution number 2025 dash 97 to be ratified in reference to the municipal water pollution prevention, also known as MWPP, for the 2024 annual report. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas, the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, is required by Alabama Department of Environmental Management, AM, to file annually a municipal water pollution prevention, MWPP, report for our waste water treatment plant. And whereas, the utilities department has prepared a report as required by AM. And whereas, the report has been reviewed as required by the city's consulting engineer, Hazen and Sardine. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, accepts the 2024 annual MWPP report for 2024 and authorizes the utilities department to file a report with AM. Pass approval adopted this 29th day of May, 2025, ratified this 3rd day of June, 2025.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Davis, for the reading of the resolution, which Council we've all heard. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to ratify, please.
Motion to ratify.
Okay. They have a motion from Councilmember Green. They have a second.
Say it.
Second, Councilman Gordon. Any comments, discussion? Okay. All right, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor of...
Yes. Proceeding on, Council on the Building Department. We have six resolution in reference to awarding bids for demolition and removal of structures on the following properties. 1008 12th Avenue, J&amp;J Land Development Corporation, $3,200. 1010 12th Avenue, J&amp;J Land Development Corporation, $3,100. 536 Place, J&amp;J Land Development Corporation, $5,800. 2107 Somerville Road, J&amp;J Land Development Corporation, $9,000. 2107 dash 8, Somerville Road, J&amp;J Land Development Corporation, $5,500. 1228 Street, J&amp;J Land Development Corporation, $4,800. At this time, Council, I would ask, Kirk, to read one master resolution in the presence of the Council. We will take it over for one second. Council, all good with that? Just a second.
Yes.
All right, Mrs. Davis.
Whereas, the City of Phoenix City has solicited bids for the demolition of structure as required by Alabama law. And whereas, the parent co-bidder meet the specifications required for the demolition of the structures at the following locations are as follows. Number one, 1008 12th Avenue, J&amp;J Land Development E, $3,200. Number two, 1010 12th Avenue, J&amp;J Land Development E, $3,100. Number three, 531 6 Place, J&amp;J Land Development E, $5,800. Number four, 2107 Somerville Road, J&amp;J Land Development E, $9,000. Number five, 2107 dash 8, Somerville Road, J&amp;J Land Development E, $5,500. Number six, 1220 8 Street, J&amp;J Land Development E, $4,800. All bids being submitted with done in peace. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, accepts these apparent co-bids and shall award said bid as referenced above. Pass approval adopted this 3rd day of June, 2025.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Davis, for the reading of that master resolution, Council we've all heard. Resolution, at this time, I'd like to ask this Council for a motion, please. They have a motion.
Motion approved.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day. They have a second. Second, Councilman Gordon. Any comments or discussion? All right, I'd like to call both Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor of...
Yes. And also, Council on the Building Department, there's a resolution in reference to taking bids proceeding for the demolition of property located at 2116 6 Avenue. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas, resolution number 2024 dash 252 declared the property located at 2116 6 Avenue a public nuisance and authorized action to be taken to remove said unsafe structure. And whereas, sealed bids were received and open for demolition of structure located at 2116 6 Avenue. And whereas, the city wishes to reject all bids. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that all bids received for the demolition of structure located at 2116 6 Avenue are hereby rejected. Pass approval adopted this 3rd day of June, 2025.
Okay, thank you again, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've heard the resolution, at this time I'd like to ask for a motion, please. Motion to approve. All right, we have a motion from Councilman Gordon. They have a second. Second. Second, Councilman Day. We have that, Mrs. Davis?
Yes, sir.
We have the motion. We have the second. Council, any comments or discussion?
I guess, uh, Mayor, could we get somebody to operate on for the social basis to tell them why that was rescinded?
Yeah. Right?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor Council, this one was rescinded because the owner of the property, actually so is the property, she sold it out and that person that owned the property decided he would go ahead and tear it, do the demolition, buy it for it, so he wanted to start that process. That day, it was something between us getting bids for the project, so since we received the years, we got to get that process rejected.
Okay. So see, I would assume out of time to...
Yes, sir. The demolition permit is good for six months, but he had dungeons on site as an appearance to keep sorry.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Rick. That's appreciated. You know, the comments and discussion? If not, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor of...
Yes. Proceeding on, Council on the City Clerk Department. We have a resolution in reference to appoint City Clerk Shannon Davis as the election manager and absentee election manager of the Office of 26, 2025 Municipal Election, Board of Education Election and Run Office Election if necessary. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas, the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, will be conducting a general municipal election and Board of Education election on Tuesday, August 26, 2025. And whereas, in accordance with applicable statutes, the City Council hereby appoints Shannon Davis, City clerk, as the election manager and the absentee election manager. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, as follows. Number one, that Shannon Davis, City clerk, be and is hereby authorized as the election manager and the absentee election manager to handle absentee ballots, to prepare and publish the voter registrations list and perform such other duties as required by law in and about the holding of the August 26, 2025 Municipal Election and Board of Education Election and, if necessary, a runoff election on September 23, 2025. Pass approval adopted this 3rd day of June, 2025.
Okay. Thank you again, Mrs. Davis, for the reading of the resolution. Council, we've all heard the resolution. I'd like to ask the Council at this time for a motion, please.
Motion approved.
Motion, Councilman Day, and that's the second, Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Okay. We have the motion and we have the second. Any comments or discussion? All right. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor of...
Yes. Thank you. Next, Council on the Engineering Department. We have a resolution in reference to authorize Alabama Power to install 153 wide LED street lights, 5,001 through 8,500 lumens, type 2, gray, 4,000 K, near 1, near 1006 12 Street. Mrs. Davis.
Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the city will authorize Alabama Power to install the following street light and pay the monthly electric service to Alabama Power Company for the street light as follows. Number one, install 153 wide LED street light, 5,001 through 8,500 lumens, type 2, gray, 4,000 K, near 1006 12 Street. Pass approval adopted this 3rd day of June, 2025.
Thank you again so much. Council, we've heard the resolution, at this time I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion approved.
We have a motion from Councilman Gordon. They have a second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Day. Any comments or discussion? All right. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor of...
Yes. Thank you. Also, Council proceeding on. We have a resolution in reference to authorize Alabama Power to install 3, 239 wide roadway street lights, 27,001 to 34,000 lumens, type 3, gray, 4,000 K, on US Highway South near Noel's Road, 5th Street South and College Drive. Mrs. Davis.
Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the city will authorize Alabama Power to install the following street lights and pay the monthly electric service to Alabama Power Company for the street lights as follows. Number one, install 3, 239 wide roadway street lights, 27,001 through 34,000 lumens, type 3, gray, 4,000 K, on US Highway 431 South, near Noel's Road, this street South and College Drive. Pass approval adopted this 3rd day of June, 2025.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've heard the resolution. Standing there, have a motion from the Council, please.
Motion approved.
A motion, Councilman Gordon, second. Councilmember Green. We have that, Mrs. Davis?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any comments or discussion? All right. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor of...
Yes.
Thank you.
Also, proceeding on, Council on the Engineering Department, there's a resolution in reference to accept the property easement dedication of property known as Parcell 2, 3 and 5 A8 of the survey of the division of lands inherited, Shepherd and Henry. Tim Thompson, Construction and Land Management Corporation, own. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas, the Phoenix City Plant Commission has determined that it is in the best interest of the city to accept the dedication of public easements dedicated by the replac of parcels 2, 3 and 5 A8 of the survey of the divisions of lands inherited, Shepherd and Henry, located in Section 5 Township 17 North, Range 30 East, Russell County, Alabama, dated May 13, 2025, prepared by ADA U-Banks Registered Land Surveyor. And whereas, the owner of said property, Tim Thompson, Construction and Land Management E, desires to dedicate the same to the City of Phoenix City. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby accept the dedication of said public easements as shown on the above reference replac of property. Pass approval adopted this 3rd day of June, 2025.
Okay, thank you again, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask the Council for a motion, please.
Motion approved.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day. They have a second.
Say it.
Second, Councilman Gordon. Council, any comments or discussion? Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor of...
Yes.
Thank you.
And next, Council on the Utilities Department. We have a resolution in reference to authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to accept a proposal from Thompson Power Systems for the preventive maintenance services of the 19 emergency generator sites in an amount not to exceed $34,571. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas, the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, is in need of annual preventative maintenance services for 19 emergency generator sites. And whereas, the city has received a proposal for preventative maintenance services for 19 emergency generator sites from Thompson Power Systems in a total amount of $34,571. And whereas, said proposal includes load tests on each generator to confirm that the generator will supply the power needed for the respective facilities being serviced. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and allow the mayor and city manager to accept a proposal from Thompson Power Systems for the preventive maintenance services for the 19 emergency generator sites in an amount not to exceed $34,571. Pass approval adopted this 3rd day of June, 2025.
Okay. Thank you again, Mrs. Davis, for the reading of the resolution, Council, which we all heard. At this time, I'd like to ask the Council for a motion, please. They have a motion, Council.
Still approved.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Gordon. They have a second.
Say it.
Second, Councilman Day. Council, any comments or discussion?
I just wanted to hear if I may, having the preventive maintenance services in place for 19, I just wanted to hear from one of our professionals there. Have we ever had to, or when is the last time we had to use this generator for any averages or what happened?
Mayor, we have these 39 meter bus stations, so I'm not here with all of the diversity uses for these, or we used one of the third station. Last year, we had power failure from Coganella Power. We had some, uh, water plant, this season, when our, going out there, I would say that was way over. And then we got some, uh, our little station, so whenever we have our admin, that was a part of the power system we may have to another building, I'm not sure if it was like the last year, but whichever year that's supposed to power failure to deal with, somewhere to use.
Okay, it's just good to have it, making that point. It's good to have that type of service.
Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate you. Thank you so much. Any other comments or discussion?
Well, basically, I guess, I hope you got out there. When you finish at the bottom, I'd like to come on, get the power goes out. Once the power goes out, maybe once the power is restored, then it's no use for them. But at the same time, you have to directly check them, make sure they go through in the whole time, one day, and periodically it's scheduled, but they go by. So that's what they're there for, you know? It's just a matter of going back, if you want to go actively, how many times and when they should be used, that's something that we give.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Any other comments or discussion? If not, Council, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor of...
Yes.
Thank you. Next, Council. We have a resolution in reference to authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to enter into an agreement with Robinson Paving Company to repair a portion of the McIntosh Sanitary Sewer live station on Route Chase Drive in an amount not to exceed $45,564.69. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas, emergency work was required on a portion of the driveway to the McIntosh Sanitary Sewer live station on Route Chase Drive. And whereas, it was necessary that this work be performed as expeditiously as possible to ensure access to the live station. And whereas, Robinson Paving Company repaired said driveway and submitted an invoice for said repairs in the amount of $45,564.69. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby declare the McIntosh Sewer Station driveway repair an emergency and authorizes in direct the mayor and city manager to enter into an agreement with Robinson Paving Company to perform said repairs in an amount not to exceed $45,564.69. Pass approval adopted this 3rd day of June, 2025.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis, again, for that, reading the resolution, Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask the Council for a motion, please.
Motion approved.
Motion, Councilmember Green. They have a second.
Say it.
Second, Councilman Day. Comments or discussion? Okay. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor of...
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, Council, we have a resolution in reference to accept a name proposal from MR Systems and Infomart Company for the calibration services of the water filtration plant in an amount not to exceed $21,000. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas, the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, is in need of the equipment calibration services for the equipment at the water filtration plant. And whereas, the city has received a proposal for calibration services for equipment from MR Systems and Infomart Company in the amount of $21,000. And whereas, said proposal includes documentation of any instrumentation found out of compliance and provide estimates for repair or replacement of said equipment along the calibration documents for all instruments that pass inspection and service. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, hereby authorizes the mayor and city manager to accept a proposal from MR Systems and Infomart Company for the calibration services for the water filtration plant equipment in an amount not to exceed $21,000. Pass approval adopted this 3rd day of June, 2025.
Thank you again, Mrs. Davis.[1764.16] Council, we've heard your resolution. At this time I'd like to ask the Council for a motion, please.
Motion approved.
That's a motion from Councilman Ford, that's a second, Councilwoman Davis.
That's right.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, Mrs. Davis?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any comments or discussion, Council? Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardy?
Yes.
Mayor Robert?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, Council, we have a resolution of reference to authorize and direct the mayor's city manager to hire Southern Rewinding Industrial Sales and Services to repair and install a wastewater pump at the water filtration plant in an amount not to exceed eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. Mrs. Davis?
Whereas the water filtration plant currently has only one wastewater pump operating and a second pump which needs repair. And whereas if the one operational pump stops working, the WLP could not send much waste to the basin because it would eventually overflow, which makes the repair of the second pump an emergency. And whereas Southern Rewinding Industrial Sales and Services has inspected the pump needing repair and submitted a proposal for this urgent repair work and installation of said pump in the amount of eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby declare the repair and installation of the wastewater pump at the water filtration plant an emergency and authorizes and directs the mayor and city manager to hire Southern Rewinding Industrial Sales and Services for the emergency work to repair and install said pump in an amount not to exceed eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. Pass approved and adopted this Thursday of June, Twenty Twenty-Five.
Thank you again, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've heard your resolution. At this time I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion approved.
All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Davis, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Davis. Any comments or discussion, Council?
Only thing I'd like to ask is, when these pumps go out, it's certainly one just quits working, you know? Very young, short period of time. But when one starts to go out, start to get trouble, we just check them here, how do you, I mean, you notice something on monitoring board or how do you kind of figure one that's starting to give you trouble, the way you can, you know, be prepared and, you know, fix it in the near future?
So, monitor, see if it makes any noise. One last time, they started making noise. And they got kind of, sort of, um, and then this one, it had a leak on the, uh, basically a social pole versus both the pole.
Right.
It's got two, go there and the pole pulled far up, you know, so. So it had a, a, a part of it, when it was there. There's a company that would pull it up and it got dry, so that part of it, so also the repair team was listening. Uh, it started this, the pump was there, this one started making noise, so it had, uh, started running right, and so that's what swapped out, the new one is there now. And then took this back to their shop to inspect and see if it was leaking. But sometimes, they're like, selling that noise for five, eight, or?
There's no something good.
Need it.
Right. Well, that's basically what a car does. Car runs very good one day, and all of a sudden you hear a noise you think you hear, but you're not sure you heard it. Then you start listening for it, and two or three days later, you hear it again, and you do realize. I'm just curious, you know, how you kind of catch those things, because I know y'all doing a good job of staying on top of that stuff, we never, you'd be caught behind AHA, so to speak, where everything just shuts down. So very fortunate to have y'all watching and stuff like that.
Mm-hmm. So we're looking for other ways to, to inspect things. Eventually, our engine, you know, we're looking at stuff that, almost, six, something, sorry, hot. It takes us four, and also, eight, uh.
You're right.
Thank you, John, appreciate you speaking. Any other comments or discussion? Not at this time I'd like to call for the vote, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardy?
Yes.
Mayor Robert?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, Council's ordinance, we have a second reading. It's an ordinance to exempt certain covered items under municipal sales and use tax during the third full weekend of July the twenty-fifth, July of twenty twenty-five, excuse me, preferred to answer back to school sales tax holiday. The first reading was on the twentieth of last month. Would I ask for a rereading, this ordinance? But I would ask, this Council for a motion, please, may I have a motion?
Motion approved.
All right, we have a motion from the Councilmember Green, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Davis. Okay. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardy?
Yes.
Mayor Robert?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, Council on the Ordinance, this is the first reading. It's an ordinance setting qualification fees upon all candidates seeking the twenty twenty-five municipal and Phoenix City Board election. Mrs. Davis?
An ordinance of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, setting qualification fees upon all candidates seeking the twenty twenty-five Municipal and Phoenix City School Board election. Be ordained by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, as follows. Section one, a qualification fee in the amount of fifty dollars is hereby fixed and imposed upon all candidates seeking election as mayor of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, except as herein after provided for. Section two, a qualification fee in the amount of fifty dollars is hereby fixed and imposed upon all candidates seeking election as councilmembers of Phoenix City, Alabama, except as herein after provided for. Section three, a qualification fee in the amount of fifty dollars is hereby fixed and imposed upon all candidates seeking election as a member of the Phoenix City Board of Education of Phoenix City, Alabama, except as herein after provided for. Section four, any person desiring to qualify who is not financially able to pay the required fee may qualify, provided such perspective candidate furnishes the per with an affidavit stating that he is financially unable to pay the required fee fixed by this ordinance. Section five, this ordinance is adopted pursuant to Section eleven dash forty-six dash two of the Alabama Code nineteen seventy-five and shall be effective in all elections, both general and special, for after said offices from and after the date of adoption. Section six, this ordinance shall become effective upon obligation in the citizen of East Alabama. Pass approved and adopted this Thursday of June, Twenty Twenty-Five.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we very appreciate that, at this time, Council, I'd like to ask for a motion to suspend the ruling.
Motion to suspend the ruling.
All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Ford, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Davis. Okay, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardy?
Yes.
Mayor Robert?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, Council, at this time I'd like to ask for a motion for approval of this ordinance, may I have a motion?
Motion approved.
All right, we have a motion from the Councilwoman Davis, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Green. Okay. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardy?
Yes.
Mayor Robert?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, on the ordinance, Council, is it an ordinance? Is an ordinance establishing the use of electronic vote counting devices? Mrs. Davis?
An ordinance establishing the use of electronic vote counting devices. Whereas Chapter Seven of the Tom Seventeen of the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, as amended, and the regulations adopted pursuant thereto by the Alabama Voting Committee provide for the use of electric, um, electronic vote counting systems. And whereas Section seventeen dash seven dash forty-one of the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five provides that a municipality made in its discretion by adoption of an appropriate ordinance, authorize, adopt, and direct the use of electronic vote counting systems for use in all election in such municipality. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council, the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, the city, as follows. Number one, that for all elections held subsequent to the passage of this ordinance, the use of the D S two hundred ballot scanner slash voting machine and the express vote voter assist terminal, a system which complies with Section seventeen dash seven dash twenty-one of the Code of Alabama, and any regulations adopted pursuant thereto is hereby authorized for the recording, counting, and tabulating of any and all election results. Number two, that the mayor of the City of Phoenix City is hereby authorized and directed to file a copy of this ordinance with the Secretary of State as provided in Section seventeen dash seven dash twenty-one, Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five. Number three, that this ordinance shall take effect upon its adoption and publication as required by law. Number four, that this ordinance shall be published in a newspaper of general circulation in the City of Phoenix City, Russell County, Alabama. Pass approved and adopted this Thursday of June, Twenty Twenty-Five.
Okay, thank you again, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've all heard the first reading. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to place on first reading, please.
Motion to place on first reading.
All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Davis, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Ford.
Uh, may I ask, first, uh, this is our first time, well, I don't know, the first time you've used this device yet, is it?
Yes, sir, it's our first time using it. It will be the first time using it in a while.
You want to have somebody to train it?
Is it to train it?
You'll be trained on that?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I'll be, I'll set it up, the training, and train them individuals, uh, coworkers, and everybody, I'll be, um.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Mrs. Davis, Council, at this time, I'd call for the vote, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardy?
Yes.
Mayor Robert?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, Council, we have a public notice and first reading. So let our recommendation from the Plant Commission, public notice and ordinance to add access to the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, point three zero plus minor acres of land located on Oakley Road in Newsome Drive, E E H Holdings LLC is the owner. At this time, Council, I'd like to call for the clerk to read the letter of the public notice as well as the ordinance. Mrs. Davis?
I have a letter coming from the Plant Commission regarding rezon zero point three zero plus minor acres of, on Oakley Road, near the corner of Oakley Road and Newsome Drive, E E H Holdings LLC owner. The Plant Commission of the City of Phoenix City met on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, to consider the request of E E H Holdings LLC owner to annex and pre-zone zero point three zero plus minor acres located on Oakley Road, near the corner of Oakley Road and Newsome Drive as an R two zone, medium density residential district. This request is prior to the approval of annexation as followed by Act two thousand nine dash six twenty-eight of Alabama State Legislature. It is the recommendation of the Plant Commission that this request to annex and pre-zone be approved by the City Council. Cecily, Tony Teyo, Vice Chairman, Phoenix City Plant Commission, Eliza Zilwai, Secretary of Phoenix City Plant Commission. Public notice reads as follows. Noticeance hereby given that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, in response to a request made by the Plant Commission of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, will meet on the fifteenth day of July, twenty twenty-five, at nine o'clock, eight a.m., Eastern Standard Time, at the City Council chambers located at eleven eleven Ross Street, Phoenix City, Alabama, to consider the following amendment to the zoning ordinance of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, and ordinance. An ordinance to annex into the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, tracts of land lying in Section Five Township Seventeen North, Range Thirty East, Russell County, Alabama, said property to be annexed in and in as an R two zone, medium density residential district. Whereas the City of Phoenix City has received a petition signed by E E H Holdings, owner of the property described in said petition, requesting that said property be annexed into the City of Phoenix City and that said property be annexed in as an R two zone, medium density residential district, said property being more particularly described as follows. Whereas the City of, the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, finds that said property described in said petition does not lie within the corporate limits or police jurisdiction of any other municipality and further finds that said property is contiguous to the present corporate limits of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama. And whereas the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has considered said petition to annex and request to zone as R two zone, medium density residential district, and is of the opinion that said petition should be granted and that said property should be annexed into the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, as a R two zone, medium density residential district in voting District Two. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that said council does hereby consent to the annexation of said property into the City of Phoenix City and that the zoning ordinance of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, adopted on the seventeenth day of September, two thousand two, be amended so that said property is annexed in as R two zone, medium density residential district. Be it further ordained that a copy of this ordinance be filed by the City Clerk in the office of the Judge of Probate of Russell County, Alabama, and copy of said ordinance be published one time in the newspaper published in Russell County, Alabama. All ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith are hereby repealed by this ordinance. As said, any persons desiring to be heard concerning the zoning of the above described property may appear before the council at an aforementioned time and place to be heard. Pass approved and adopted this Thursday of June, Twenty Twenty-Five.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. We need to catch a break, Mr. Davis.
Thank you so much. Council, we've all heard the first reading, the public notice as well as the ordinance. At this time, Council, I'd like to ask for a motion to, uh, accept the letter, approve the public notice, and to place on first reading.
All the motions filed for reelection.
Okay, we have a motion from the Councilwoman Davis, may I have a second? Second, Councilman Ford. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardy?
Yes.
Mayor Robert?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, Council on the License Applications, it's the second reading. And I do want to go ahead and say, I apologize if I mispronounced his first name, so please forgive me. Second reading is an application for an all premise beer license, an all premise beer license. An all premise wine license submitted by Nettie Pena for incorporation doing business as food mark one located at thirty-eight fourteen Oakley Road, Phoenix City, Alabama. The first reading was on the twentieth of last month. I might want to ask the clerk to reread, but however, I will ask the Council for a motion, please, may I have a motion?
Motion approved.
All right, we have a motion from the Councilwoman Davis, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Davis. Comments or discussion? Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardy?
Yes.
Mayor Robert?
Yes.
Thank you.
Also proceeding on the Council on the License Application, this is also the second reading. It's an application for an all premise beer license, an all premise wine license submitted by Nettie Pena for incorporation doing business as food mark four, located at one twenty-eight Highway one sixty-five, Phoenix City, Alabama. The first reading was also, this was done on the twentieth of last month. I might want to ask the clerk to reread this. However, I will ask the Council for a motion, please.
Motion approved.
A motion from the Councilman Ford, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Green. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardy?
Yes.
Mayor Robert?
Yes.
Thank you.
Council proceeding on with the first reading. It's an application for an all premise beer license and all premise wine license submitted by Nettie Pena to incorporation doing business as food mark two located at thirty-nine thirty Highway eighty west, Phoenix City, Alabama. Mrs. Davis?
I have three letters. First letter coming from Chief of Police George Gates Donner, First letter coming from Chief of Police George H. Stoddinger, reference to Natapanini two Inc., going business as food mark two, rear of Natapanini, thirty-nine thirty highway eighty west, Penny City, Alabama, three six eight seven zero. I have reviewed the applications for on-premise beer and on-premise wine licenses. And I have no objection to the issuance of these licenses to this applicant based on his criminal background investigation. Second letter coming from Fire Chief Kristen McKenney. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Rudar Natapanini of Natapanini two Inc., going business as food mark two located at thirty-nine thirty highway eighty west, Penny City, Alabama, three six eight seven zero. This applicant has applied for on-premise beer and on-premise wine licenses. This facility is located outside Penny City Fire and Rescue jurisdiction. Third letter coming from Chief Building Official Ray Rogers. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Rudar Natapanini for Natapanini two Inc., going business as food mark two located at thirty-nine thirty U.S. Highway eighty west for an on-premise beer and on-premise wine licenses. This facility has been inspected and meets the minimum building and fire code requirements. This office has no objections to the approval of this license.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we've all heard the first reading. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to place on first reading, please.
Motion to place on first reading.
All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Bailey, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Bailey. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Also, Council on the first reading, it's an application for an on-premise beer license, an on-premise wine license submitted by Nettie Patina. Three, incorporation going business as food mark three located at thirty-seven seventeen U.S. Highway four thirty-one South, Penny City, Alabama. Mrs. Davis.
I have three letters. First letter coming from the Chief of Police George H. Stoddinger in reference to Natapanini three Inc., going business as food mark three. Rudar Natapanini, thirty-seven seventeen, U.S. Highway four thirty-one South, Penny City, Alabama, twenty-six six nine. I have reviewed the applications for on-premise beer and on-premise wine licenses. And I have no objection to the issuance of these licenses to this applicant based on his criminal background investigation. Second letter coming from Fire Chief Kristen McKenney. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Rudar Natapanini of Natapanini three Inc., going business as food mark three located at thirty-seven seventeen, highway four thirty-one South, Penny City, Alabama, three six eight six nine. This applicant has applied for on-premise beer and on-premise wine licenses. This facility is located outside Penny City Fire and Rescue jurisdiction. Third letter coming from Chief Building Official Ray Rogers. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Rudar Natapanini for Natapanini three Inc., going business as food mark three located at thirty-seven seventeen, highway four thirty-one South for an on-premise beer and on-premise wine licenses. This facility has been inspected and meets the minimum building and fire code requirements. This office has no objections to the approval of this license. That concludes.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we have all heard the first reading. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to place on first reading.
Motion to place on first reading.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Green. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, Council, I'd like to call, uh, turn this to Jimmy Graham.
Mayor, Council, we have a front line meeting of the general assembly members. Uh, fined by, by, very, only Matthews. She's represented by, um, guardian law group. Uh, had a fine of, this involved a, a automobile accident or bus accident where, um, they were cleaning the bus, um, and, and a vehicle, a bus, round the road, down in light of the road. Uh, Mrs., uh, or me as Matthews, um, you know, well, first of all, we don't own a bus. We don't have anything to do with Penny City, Russell County, school bus systems, and we don't have anything to do with the school board as far as being, um, him under our supervision or anything like that. Uh, you, as we discussed yesterday, um, Mr. Chan Gamm, our assistant, senior manager responded to the guardian law group explaining that. And, um, my recommendation is that you follow what Mr. Gamm has recommended in opposite, uh, another letter today explaining that y'all have to sue the application is that, uh, we claim and that, you know, it's been denied based on your recommendation and that. And also this claim was really filed outside six months, but that doesn't make a complaint apply because, you know, we don't have anything to do with that. So my recommendation is denied.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Council, we've heard our primary regulation relation. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve that regulation relation.
Motion approved.
All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Bailey, may I have a second? Second, Councilwoman Ford. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Thank you again, Council, we appreciate you so much, you have a vote. Again, we thank everyone, our department is, and everyone that's here. And make sure we give kudos to the people who was, uh, recognized this morning. It's a great thing that we do, can't say thank you about. And at this time, I'd like to add again, Councilmembers, before we have drunk anything, any Councilmember would like to say something? Refer to the City Manager and close out. So with that, thank you all, this, uh, I guess I can say it again in a summer. So let's make sure we, uh, stay on the lookout for each other and make sure that we continue to be the person that we, uh, intend to be. And we certainly thank everyone for being here. We thank our citizens, uh, and also we thank, uh, CTV Bean for being here. So one of the things I haven't said in a while is going to continue to be a living and not a leaving in spite of. So thanks, everyone, thanks to CTV Bean, and at this time, we do stand.